Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. Introduction of lead items. None. Approval of agenda. Need a recommended resolution that the committee of the whole for the council of May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one be approved. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move that.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Discussion. Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carried. And it's a previous meeting, none. Petitions and delegations. Urban systems. Now, I see several people on there. So who do we have? From urban systems. We have Sydney. And Jake.
Yep.
Hello.
Hello. Else do we have?
It it'll it'll be just Sydney and and myself from urban systems.
And I'm here as well. I'm a student working with urban system.
Oh. And Michaela, yep.
And my kid, don't forget Michaela.
Sorry, my bad.
So sorry.
Oh, I hear Sue.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, there we go. Counselor Paulson, sorry. Is tonight's meeting being recorded? It is. Okay, so please, everybody keep in mind that we are being recorded. And we'll start off with urban systems. If the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you all for being here with us tonight. We're really looking forward to sharing what we've learned and put together and talking through some ideas with you guys today. So I'll get started. Um, I'm gonna share my screen if that's all right. So I'll just get started with an agenda of what we'll go through. So we wanted to give you an update on our progress so far. Review the background report, review the survey results, do a small visioning exercise, and then discuss next steps in. So we are now in phase two, as you can see, we are doing our council workshop. We've completed our community survey. We're starting to prep prep some engagement materials for our in personing, hopefully in person engagement in about a month or so. And we've completed some stakeholder workshops. As you can see, our phase one was background research and preparing our engagement plan. And I'll discuss next steps where we'll go from here a bit later. So, as you all know, we were there for the town hall. So these are a few things I've put together and comments from council and that. So thank you for those comments and sharing this this great mind map that's been super helpful. So just to kind of run through some points that we heard was a lot of talk about infrastructure capacity and spending, particularly on the water and sewer system. Lots of talk about housing, future development from existing landowners where it will go in future. Young families moving to Sayward, coordinating with the Strathcona Regional District, and managing, preparing for, and leveraging growth of all kinds. Those are kind of what we heard from the virtual town hall and what we're taking away from it. So we've, as I mentioned, we've started talking with stakeholders. We've so far discussed had a discussion with Roger Pecquet, who owns Kelsey Bay Investment and is a landowner in Sayward. We've talked with Cooverden, which is the development arm for Island Timberlands, who also is a landowner in Sayward. And we've talked with Western Forest Products, the Strathcona Regional District, Nature Trust of British Columbia, and we have yet to talk to the Comox First Nation and Micadama, but those are on the to do list. Comox has expressed interest in speaking to Mayor and Council as well, so we can discuss that potentially later. Um, all the, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
The stakeholders meeting, what what came out of that?
It was a pretty high level discussion and Jake jump in whenever, but pretty high level discussion about, you know, what especially the landowners, what their future in Sayward looks like. Though nothing super concrete came out of it, I don't think there was kind of an most of them are on board with, you know, the O C P update and want to work with us through the visioning process and discuss what would be best for Sayward. I think that's, I don't know if there's anything specific, Jake, that you want to share.
You said that most of them are.
Sorry, all of them are.
Thank you.
Don't want to scare you.
Yeah, oh, um, maybe just add a couple of comments here and, you know, and feel free to jump in as well, but in particular with, you know, Western Forest Products, you know, talking about their sort of future with the log sort and what their plans are. And they're they're, you know, you know, explained that Sayward continues to be a very strategic part of their operations and they don't see that changing. They're working through some some lease issues right now with with Island Timberlands, but they're very keen to be part of the process and and, you know, when we get into engagement in person. You know, they expressed interest in having some representatives come up and participate, and then also provide feedback, you know, on a draft O C P as it actually gets developed. And that would be the same with, you know, the Strathcona Regional District, Cooverden and Roger Pecquet. With with Cooverden and Roger Pecquet, the discussion focused largely on some of their land holdings and the development potential for their for those lands. And so just explaining what, you know, their vision is and what they're they're hoping to see. And I would say with Roger Pecquet, you know, he does have a vision and you know, would like to see some development proceed. Cooverden, you know, they, I don't think they've got any firm plans right now, but they were, it sounds like they might be interested in pursuing that in the future, but no firm plans from them right now. And they're just, I think, right now excited to be part of the, you know, of the process moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll add as well, Roger Pecquet, he kind of expressed this interest in creating like a tourist hub, like that seemed really important to him, which I know is important to council and staff. So that was great to hear that he's on board with, you know, turning his development into something positive for the community as well. So that's great.
Thank you.
Great. So we'll get into the background report. I think you should have all received it and hopefully you got a chance to run through it quickly and and I prepared a few slides just to run through it so we don't have to go into too detail because it is a bit dense. And yeah, please ask questions. Go ahead.
Yes. I had one question. Has Island Timberlands, are they in the midst of changing their name or Cooverden? I haven't heard that before.
Cooverden is like the real estate and development arm of Island Timberlands, so they handle their land holdings. I don't think that they're planning, it's kind of a separate entity to my understanding.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else, counsel, have any questions so far? No. Oh, Counselor Craig?
I do. Sorry, I unmute and everything. I didn't see a list in your stakeholders of Bob Van Brocklin. Did you, were you not aware that Bob Van Brocklin had also proposed a, I believe, a twenty unit development in the village of Sayward? Any considerable property were, was he omitted or perhaps you didn't know about him?
He, I can say he wasn't omitted. We we just maybe didn't know about him and he, you know, that, you know, we could talk to him moving forward. For sure.
He has, he had, we actually have council reports from, I believe, two thousand and nineteen with his proposal in it, maybe two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. As well worth looking at his proposal that he submitted to the former council and bringing him to the table as well.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. C A O, you had a question or an answer?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I was just going through to Counselor Craig through the chair. Most of the other people have come forward and indicated that they were interested in participating. I have spoken with Mr. Van Brocklin quite a few times on other matters. But he's never mentioned that he has any more land, and I'm just looking up to see where his land is. So, but we can follow up with him if you if you think it's worthwhile. It's the first I've ever heard of anything of him proposing anything. So we'll follow up on that.
Sure. Counselor Kirchner was also involved in Bob Van Brocklin's proposal. He was on council at that point in time, and I'll dig it up in my files that I've got and I'll forward it to everybody for review.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, Sydney.
Yeah.
All yours.
And I should also say that a list of stakeholders isn't exhaustive. We're always open to adding new stakeholders if you think it's worth it. Yeah, please let us know. All right, so I'll just go by a section of the report, and if you have questions, just let me know. So the current population from the two thousand and sixteen census is three hundred eleven and eleven, though evidence shows that Sayward will face growth pressures in the future. So I'll kind of get into that. But, you know, market trends are showing that it's increasing in the area and with the existing landowners that may be developing in future. It's kind of anecdotal, but there may be future residential development that may increase growth. So some other demographics, residents over sixty five make up twenty nine percent of the population and children fourteen years and younger make up thirteen percent of the population. Sayward's median age is fifty seven point nine, which is compared with B C's median age of forty three and Vancouver Island's median age of forty seven point eight. And fifteen percent of the population identifies as indigenous. In our community participation section, we counted over twenty community organizations. The village shares information with the community through their website, a monthly newsletter, social media, and various bulletin boards. And that was a topic of our of the survey as well, which we'll get into about how the resident, the respondents like to hear about village news. The village is committed to building and maintaining a strong working relationship with Comox First Nation. And we've kind of noticed and in the survey responses, COVID nineteen has impacted the ways in which the Sayward community gathers and communicates, which is not unique to Sayward. It's all over, but definitely worth considering as we develop this O C P. The economic development section. It's important to recognize Sayward's abundant natural recreation opportunities, small town quality of life and high public, a high level of public amenities that provide economic development advantages for Sayward. Just about leveraging those advantages, agriculture, forestry, and fishing industries make up thirty three percent of Sayward's labor force. And Sayward is a lifestyle community rather than an employment center. And key planning considerations are identified in the very helpful economic development strategy and the tourism strategy, which were helpful to develop this report. For physical development infrastructure, so the village of Sayward encompasses four hundred and seventy two hectares of land. The two thousand and five O C P established three comprehensive development areas, which we will be looking at through this process. So there's the tourism and marine comprehensive C D A of the tourist and residential and industrial and commercial. So the sewage lagoon capacity has a designed flow based on five hundred people, and the water reservoir has a capacity to serve a population of three hundred and fifty nine.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Where do you, where did you find the number of the water reservoir? The capacity to serve three fifty nine.
This was from an email that I received from the C A O.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and from the asset management report, the village's infrastructure is generally aging. Something in mind. And something we came across during this process as well was the working waterfront plan completed in two thousand and seventeen. The results of that was some concept designs for future redevelopment of the waterfront, so it will be taken into consideration as we move forward.
Sydney, before we move on there from on the infrastructure side of things, too, just want to note that one of the things we will be looking at as part of the O C P is a bit of an assessment of the water and sewer systems and identifying, you know, what specifically would be needed to, in terms of upgrades, to be able to accommodate growth in the future.
Yeah, I should also say these are like the high level bullet points of the report, but there's quite a bit more. It's tough to pick up the the key points. So for the housing section, so as you may know, the Strathcona Regional District completed a housing needs assessment in two thousand and eighteen, which I believe was with the help of Urban Systems. So we took a lot of the information from there. So eighty percent of private dwellings are single detached, eighty six percent of residents own their homes, seventy four percent of the housing stock was built between nineteen sixty one and nineteen eighty. In two thousand and twenty, the North Island benchmark price increased fifteen percent. So there's definitely some some market trends like showing that growth is abundant in the North Island and all over Vancouver Island, and COVID nineteen is exacerbating that as well. Sayward has a large retirement population, though little support for seniors at this moment. There's opportunity for future residential development in the coming years as development increases. So for the environment, the natural surroundings are often identified as one of the key reasons people enjoy living in Sayward. It was brought up quite often in the survey results and throughout our background research. So that's a key point that we'll be looking at. Future work with Comox First Nation will include securing a community forest to protect green space. The village has set a goal to become carbon neutral. And I'm interested in that, the timeline, maybe the O C P process can be part of developing a timeline and some goals to push that forward. The survey also identified, which we'll get into, that wildfire protection is great importance to the village, and mitigation strategies are outlined in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan developed by the Strathcona Regional District. I think that plan has thirty four recommendations for how to mitigate wildfire.
Would it, would it be, I'm just, I don't know if it's just me, but I'm picking up a little bit of background noise. Would it be possible to maybe just go unmute? Oh, there, I think that's better there. Sorry.
And last section. So Sayward's, I think maybe the two thousand and twenty expenditure report, financial report just came out. It was interesting to read Sayward expenditure for the two thousand and twenty fiscal year was one point two two million. General government service made up the largest portion of spending at twenty six percent, though it's pretty evenly distributed. And fifty six percent of the village's revenue in two thousand and twenty came from government grants and transfers, while four percent came from taxation. And the village's annual report identifies strategic goals for the future. So we'll keep our eye out for the two thousand and twenty annual report as well to include in our background information. So from here, are there any questions at this time? That's the end of the background report. Anything that stuck out that?
C A O, you have your hand up? No, sorry, Counselor Ginsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question on the on the the revenues for the village. I couldn't put together the numbers where we got fifty percent, fifty six percent, sorry, in government grants, and then four percent in taxation. So I'm trying to understand where the other forty percent comes from.
Yeah, sorry, that's my me trying to abbreviate, but there's some in the middle that I just didn't include, and I can't find it.
Just a, just a general idea.
Absolutely.
And I read through all everything, but I somehow missed it.
All right, there's, this is the revenue table here. So there's four percent from, oh, shoot, maybe this is the wrong one. Oh, sorry, it should be twenty four percent is taxation. Four percent is sales of services, fifteen percent is user fees.
Right.
Fifty six, sorry, government grants and transfers. Thank you for the.
Right, thank you. One of those math things, right?
Yeah, not quite adding up there.
And I just had another quick question, which is when you're looking at, this is, we are, we are a small village. And my understanding is that and and your organization deals with this type of process and different small villages or larger ones. This, this, this government grants to other forms of revenue, is this fairly common?
Yeah, you know, one of the things that can really sort of skew the the information is if you get a couple infrastructure projects where you've get, you know, a Build Canada grant or whatever, that can all of a sudden become a huge part of your revenues and your your expenditures. So it's quite common in in some smaller communities to have a really big portion be attributed to grants, and it's often because of a, you know, a big project like a new water treatment plant or, you know, building a lagoon or a trail where you've secured a significant grant.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great. So we'll go to the survey analysis and summary. This was, analysis was prepared with the help of Michaela, who you met earlier, and Andrew, who are V I U students who have been helping us out on this, and they did a great job putting this together. Yeah, so I'll just go through briefly, and if, again, if you have any questions, please let me know. So. Yeah.
Is it, is it possible for you to increase the font size?
How, how is that?
Much better, thank you. Old eyes.
No worries. Yeah, and I'm just gonna really talk through the kind of the tables and the graphs and that kind of things. I won't go too much into the the text. And we'll just kind of talk about it at a high level, and then you should all have a copy, so feel free to go through it in more detail. So the, we didn't have anyone under the age of fifty five that responded, so all over the age of fifty five, seventy one percent, sixty five and over. I should say, to start off, we had twenty eight respondents just before we get started.
Which, you know, twenty eight respondents, like when you're thinking of in terms of a percentage of of the population or or households, you know, when I've for twenty eight, I'm like, that's not that many. But then I'm like, well, wait a minute, that's getting pretty close to, you know, ten percent of the, you know, the the community at a population of about three hundred. And, you know, if you're typically, if you were in a bigger municipality, you know, ten percent would actually be pretty good for an O C P engagement. And we always strive for for more, but but yeah, just in terms of context, those twenty eight respondents, that is, you know, approximately ten, ten percent of the population that's responding.
So why do you think we had only twenty eight people and not more?
Yeah, great, great question. You know, I think we had it posted, you know, on the newsletter. It was online. I think part of the challenge, you know, can be COVID, like in a in other processes, what we've been able to do is go door to door. You have a community event and and sort of word gets out. So I would, I would chalk a little bit of it up to up to COVID, but I, I do think that, and, you know, and feel free to chime in here, but I do think that the word like it did get out on Facebook, and you can see how many people have 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 viewed that and sorry, Anne, do you want to go elaborate on that?
You muted it, Anne.
Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry about that. I didn't mean to interrupt you there, Jake. I was just gonna add that twenty eight is pretty good. Can you consider of a hundred and forty nine households? You know, of those hundred and forty nine households, a good percentage of the people are children, you know, some of them. And people would have filled in their surveys maybe together. So I thought actually the twenty eight was a pretty good number relative to the size.
Yeah, I agree. I will continue. So we asked the question if they live in the village, Sayward Valley or other. So we had one respondent from the Sayward Valley and one respondent who lived, they indicated in their survey that they lived on an island nearby. But Sayward was their closest municipality, so they responded. So we decided to leave both of those responses in. And so most respondents were, their primary residence was in Sayward, so primary residence being more than half the year spent in Sayward. So length of time the respondents had lived in Sayward. The largest proportion was five years or less, but it's pretty evenly divided with a little bit from each group, which I thought was great to see. And then we asked the question, what aspect of Sayward attracted you to live in the community? So for this, the respondents could pick multiple choices. So quality of life was the standout. We also had access to outdoor recreation and to retire. But all of them were chosen. So for a job, affordable housing followed a spouse or partner. Yeah.
Maybe just elaborate on the other there, too.
So for other, they said air quality, a quiet environment, low crime rate, homesteading, and living near family as reasons for why they chose to live in Sayward. So then we talked a little bit about the quality of life. So when asked about it, sixty four rated it as good and thirty two percent as excellent, which I think is a great turnout, and nobody, no respondents rated it as poor. Some were neutral, four percent were neutral. In the past five years, would you say the quality of life in Sayward has and gotten much better was four percent? Twenty two percent gotten a little better. The majority chose stayed the same at forty four percent. Twenty two percent was gotten a little worse and gotten much worse was four percent, and then other was also four percent. So the comments were thematically, they were able to elaborate on their responses for why they chose this option, and they were thematically grouped. So the most common theme from the comments was lack of services with five comments. And all five of these comments mentioned no grocery store or restaurant. Other themes were peaceful lifestyle, so that's probably on the gotten a little better or stayed the same. Positive comments about services and amenities. There were two, sorry, there were two positive comments about services and amenities. And there was one comment about lack of bylaw enforcement. And then, sorry, one comment about water quality issues, one comment about lack of recreational activities, and one unrelated comment. And they are listed here, and I won't go through them in detail. You're more than welcome to go through them. So we asked, how would you rate the village of Sayward as a place to raise a family? So forty three percent chose good and twenty five chose excellent, which was the majority of respondents. Eleven percent picked not applicable and eighteen percent picked neutral. So this could, those responses could be due to them not having children, so not being able to comment on it. Then for as a place to retire, again, mostly positive, fifty three percent as good, and twenty nine percent as excellent with eighteen percent as neutral, which again could be there not at retirement age, so didn't have an opinion on it. So then we went into, we checked in on the two thousand and five official community plan, which had four main themes, so settlement, community, environment, resources, and economy. And we checked in on, these are still valuable themes to consider for this process. So to maintain a safe, quiet, family oriented village lifestyle, seventy five percent indicated this was very important to them, with twenty one percent as somewhat important. Again, they were, they, there was a place to leave comments for this, so we had, we had eight respondents, three comments addressed crime within the community and two asked for increased enforcement of petty crime. Well, other, another commented that there is little crime, so it's a little bit of everything. One comment listed lack of social activities. One comment listed lack of services, and one was too much industrial activity on the weekends. So they so again, I won't go through the comments in detail. Environment, uh, very important to the community, as I mentioned earlier in the background report with eighty six percent listing it as very important and eleven percent somewhat important, important, and no one answering that it was not important to them. So preserving natural beauty and cleanliness was mentioned four times, which was kind of the standout in comments. Other comments referred to development, having knowledge of the issues, setting clear goals, logging, preventing illegal dump dumping and collaborating across sectors with environmental and other partners, including forestry companies, provincial ministries and coast guard. To a great comments. Resources. It's a little less important at fifty three percent, but still the majority and twenty nine percent were felt it was somewhat important with eleven percent neutral and seven percent not important. So that there was ten comments on this. Residents commented that it was important to have jobs. So three comments on importance of having jobs locally and which also contributes to having young people in town to provide other essential functions, which is one comment. Other comments were tourism, keeping fishing wild, investigating options for natural resources extraction and agriculture cooperative. For the economy, again, very important, seventy one percent, fourteen percent somewhat important. Quite a few comments, twelve comments on this theme with supporting small local businesses as being very important with four comments and creating local jobs, three comments. And then at the end of this section, we asked if anybody wanted to add any to these four goals, so to these four themes, a common one was tourism that was brought up five times. With a focus on upgrading village facilities such as village camping. Many others answer, many other answers fit into these themes already established. So economy, settlement and community and environment. So a common one was growth for the economy, which is good to note that it is a common theme throughout. Yeah. And again, comments received more than welcome to go through it. As you can see, there's ecotourism, tourism, jobs, that kind of thing. So I'll stop here and see if there's any comments at this time or questions so far. All right, seeing none, I'll just keep continuing. So we then asked what they liked best about the village of Sayward and most people responded to this. So the standout with ten comments was the quiet, peaceful. Quiet and peacefulness was mentioned most frequently, followed by proximity to nature and natural beauty, friendliness, safety, low crime, community amenities, the people's small rural feel and well-kept common areas. So that was great to hear to have all those really positive comments and things that we can incorporate into the OCP. And then we asked if they could change one thing about the village of Sayward respondents, most popular response was increase in services with seven responses. Five, five of those respondents directly mentioned a grocery store. Other popular themes were social services, including daycare services, senior housing and asset maintenance. Yeah. And then enforcement, improved governance, uh, the well, mentioning of a more intuitive village website, which is good to hear because that's coming. Positive outlook by residents and one comment asked for reduction in policing. Another for restriction on wood stoves to improve air quality and one was unrelated. It's all very interesting. And then we asked again in a comment form to describe what they imagine when they think of a flourishing village of Sayward over the next twenty years and to share with their vision for the, for Sayward's future. So they are fit into six central themes, housing, employment, population, economic development, revitalization, services and values. So some pretty clear, some of those were already addressed above and some new ones. So of the twenty four responses, most agree that more housing and more job opportunities in Sayward and Campbell River specifically are needed to sustain the existing as well as any new residents. And then when asked when they think about Sayward in twenty forty one to indicate whether they'd like to see certain land uses increase, stay the same or decrease. This one was a really interesting one to could look at. So we have municipal services. I had a more detailed description. Municipal services are bylaw enforcement, road and sidewalk maintenance and development. Which is seventy four percent increase. Municipal infrastructure, which we defined as water, sanitary sewer and storm drainage was increased. Active transportation increased seventy six percent. Roads forty four percent increase, forty eight percent stay the same. Trails, a majority increase. Parks and natural areas, a majority increase, but also quite a few people felt that they wanted to stay the same. Agricultural land stay the same was the majority. Residential development, fifty nine percent felt that it should increase. Healthcare facilities increase. Recreational facilities, sixty eight percent increase with no one feeling that they should decrease. Educational facilities, seventy one, with no one feeling they should decrease. Industrial development was quite evenly split with thirty five percent increase, forty two percent stay the same and twenty one percent decrease. And commercial development was overwhelmingly increased at ninety six percent. Again, we asked for comments. Oh, I think they're actually. There's no summary of this one. So yeah, some comments that we received were small, local industrial development would be good rather than large scale externally owned operations. So again, this theme of local businesses. Public transit to Campbell River. You know, some people are moving, ecotourism, tourism, bylaw enforcement. Very similar themes throughout I, I found. And I'll pause here if there's any questions about the land uses or any of the comments received. So then we asked about Fire Smart. So I was kind of surprised, majority of respondents, seventy one percent were familiar with the Fire Smart program, which is really great to hear. So I have it here, seventy one percent. And of those seventy one percent, it's a bit confusing the, I did a little disclaimer because some people answered no, that they're not familiar. And then answered the second question was if you are familiar, do you apply Fire Smart principles in their home? So that's why they're a bit skewed, but most people who know about Fire Smart do apply them in their home, which is great. And then we, they, we asked them, how great of a risk do you feel wildfires present to your private property? Primarily medium and some high. It's interesting to see. And how great of a risk do you feel wildfires present to the larger community at fifty nine percent high? So we had a few comments. So three people commented that Sayward is surrounded by forest, which means the risk is indisputably high, which is true. Some comments mentioned that more effort should be taken to clear dry brush. More responsibility should be taken by the forestry and industry and education on fire prevention is also suggested as a comment. And then are getting close to the end, sorry. So we asked if people were satisfied with their current housing situation and the majority were either completely satisfied or mostly satisfied with eleven percent neutral and eleven percent dissatisfied. This, I found the comments were kind of a little bit all over the place. So we had sixteen people add additional comments to this about being satisfied about their housing. So most common theme was need for seniors housing with six comments. And other themes were high home satisfaction. So that indicates that, you know, people are satisfied. High home maintenance and upkeep, upkeep costs, whereas another lack of cell service was one. And two comments were unrelated. Then we asked just generally to get a sense of annual income. Generally falling in this thirty to forty nine thousand, or I guess fifty thousand range. Again, this reflects the census data where majority of respondents, eighty nine percent own their home while eleven percent rent. The eleven percent of renters average monthly falls within the categories of either, I don't know why this is a little glitchy, but less than two hundred and ninety nine dollars a month, between five hundred and and six hundred and ninety nine dollars a month or over eleven hundred dollars a month. There were other categories in between, but those are the ones that they selected as their run, rent. So following this question, only eleven respondents provided answers, or sorry, for this question, only eleven or sorry, fifteen respondents provided answers to their monthly mortgage payments. So we noticed that this could be because we didn't leave a place for them to indicate that they had paid off their mortgage. So that was our mistake. So that could be why only fifteen, fifteen people responded to that one. Okay, so there's the, uh, sorry, if you own your home, what is your monthly mortgage payment? Like I mentioned before. What's, what year was the building you live in? Again, this reflects the census data with majority being nineteen sixty one to nineteen eighty, seventy nine percent. When asked if they expected to move into seniors housing in the next five years, ninety three percent expected they did, they were were not expecting to move into seniors houses, housing, though some comments indicated that it was because that was because it wasn't an option in their community. And they didn't want to move out of Sayward. When asked how many people live in their household, the majority were two. With some respondents being one person households and four percent being three person households, which is different than the census, which I believe is three person households. It's, is the majority. And then this is a multi, they were allowed to pick multiple responses. So that's why it's quite evenly split. So what housing issues do you feel are most affecting the village of Sayward? So housing is becoming unaffordable, not enough new homes coming onto the market, seniors housing is not adequate or affordable, lack of rental options, there is not enough variety in housing supply or other. So as you can see, it's quite evenly split between all of those.
Sydney, do you want to just elaborate quickly on the, on the other there? Cause that's a significant.
Yeah, I was just going to share the other comments. Sometimes people didn't write, we left a little line where they could write and sometimes they just shared comments later. So in addition to being unaffordable, there, okay, so most respondents selected most or all of these categories is an issue. Like I mentioned, responded indicated that housing is becoming unaffordable to rent and buy. Not enough residential development is happening, possibly lack of, due to lack of usable land was one comment. Another comment mentioned seniors leaving town due to lack of medical facilities. One comment was lack of grocery stores and the rundown appearance of the trailer park was also one comment. Two were, two respondents were completely satisfied with their housing situation, though one noted that they were aware housing is an issue in the community, though it didn't affect them directly. And final section is future engagement. So again, they could pick multiple answers here. So mostly people get their news from the monthly newsletter, but it's a little bit of everything with word of mouth, village, social media, village website and posters throughout the community. So a number of respondents indicated only using the monthly newsletter. So that's good to know as well, that it's getting a lot of readership. And what is your preferred method of providing your input on the village's official community plan update in future? So again, stay informed through newsletters, attend community meetings was another standout. So we're hoping to get to the community to have a public engagement. That would be great. Fill out surveys, uh, online engagement and posters throughout the community and no one was not interested, which is great to hear. And that's the end of the survey analysis. Is there any questions?
Counsel, anyone? Any comments? From anyone in council? Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm getting good at putting my hand down and putting my mic on at the same time. Practice makes perfect. Excellent presentation. Thank you very much and thank you for all the material. Very, very interesting. And I, I, my, these are comments, right? I, I think we're, we're a community that is dealing with many of the competing interests, so to speak. I'm, I'm gonna say that this community was built by a lumber, lumber company originally on a different model, different economic model. I found it very interesting that people were more concerned about some of the services they have available and their ability to either work here or commute to Campbell River easily. And also that when you're looking at industrial development, it's important, but almost in an old school way, we're looking at the future. And the future does seem to be driving up this way in terms of real estate values, cost of housing, which is good and bad for everyone. I think we have a number of competing interests as we stand as a village, which is in terms of wildfire risk, the water being available, coming in, the water control, both, both in terms of our streets here and in terms of flood management and our infrastructure. Our positives, as mentioned, I, I, I'm just gonna recap real quick here and these are my comments. Beautiful estuary mountains, uh, water views. We're in a dynamic situation where the world is changing and the industries are changing and communication is changing. And another point bought up, brought up is cellular service, net, net access. We are close to a perfect ecological village, but we have to manage all these factors in terms of what human beings want in terms of nature. While providing the services, potentially the services. I'll just add that some people talk about wanting a store, but if the prices aren't right, people still drive down to the major, the next major place to get the deals, right? It happens not just here. Human beings are human beings. They do it in the Comox Valley as well. So it's a fine balance between the changing in economics and also all these issues and positives. And I think that's what we have to balance moving forward with the OCP. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Craig?
Yeah, I'd like to say thanks, Sydney and Jake for your presentation. It was most illuminating. There was one part in there that scared me. And I think that it should scare everybody who, who paid attention to it. And that is fifty four percent of our revenue came from government grants. Now, given the rate of, of severe overspending by the both provincial and federal governments, at one point in time, going into the future, the belts are gonna tighten. And so government grants won't be as forthcoming. And so the minute that the belts get tightened to to try to recoup some of the, the, the costs that they've gone into debt, places like Sayward are gonna be in real trouble without those additional grants. And it's gonna fall onto the taxpayers to make up the difference of the spread. So I think that's something that going forward for future planning, that this village should be cognizant of and prepare for. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That's a really good comment. And, and I think that's where the OCP is a really important starting place to, to address some of those issues. You know, when it comes to infrastructure, you know, there are some infrastructure pressure points in the community. And so with development coming in, making sure that you have good policies to address, you know, how much of that is your existing tax base versus developers paying through? You know, it could be latecomer agreements, development cost charges. All these sort of tools that are available to the municipality. It ideally are tied to some good policies in, in the community's OCP. So being alive to that sort of taxation issue, I think is really important and, and that I, I would anticipate would be a, a key part of, of the OCP.
Yeah. Also, I think what's an important thing that was mentioned earlier is our growing senior community and the senior community that we already have in place. So in the next decade, of course, that's going to increase dramatically and we don't have And we don't have facilities, seniors residence, you know, pharmacies and so on and so forth, little restaurants where they can go, that is social interaction that is so important. So obviously, I think the O C P needs to also take a look at our senior community and what we're going to be doing going forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else have any comments? Counselor Tinsley?
Sorry, I'm back again. Just relative to our small size, very unique situation, industrial town, maybe not so unique. We don't live on an island, but we also have many people who live in the valley who use our services. And what I'm going to present for comment or consideration for everyone, and also to ask a question of, of urban systems. There are many small villages like ours that need to expand. Counselor Craig's excellent point about provincial reductions in spending possibilities in the future and grants. Villages such as ours are put against a pressure point at various points in time in various provinces and have had to somehow roll into something else and roll into a regional district or rolling to whatever you want to call it, depending on the province. I'll bring up the point of these, these two interests. We have seventeen hundred, I believe it is, population in the valley area. People who value our services, value that the R C M P is here, value that there's a healthcare center, value coming down to the waterfront. I, in envisioning things see as part of the O C P and the possibility that we can somehow link together to create those things. I know there's people in the valley who want to retire here in seniors homes, right? Not just people in the village, but people in the valley. They don't want to live in a seniors residence wherever else. And it's the same on our small islands around here. They want to find something close. So if there's a way that we can work together in whatever format, I see an opportunity for all the things we're talking about in terms of development and services to people. But it's, it, it is very tough, in my opinion, in such a small village as we stand, right? And I think that's an important thing to bring up. So just that, the question, the final question I mentioned to urban is, have you seen this before in your work?
Yeah, you know, absolutely. A couple small communities that I've done a fair bit of work with over the years would be Fort Nelson, and they actually rolled in and became the Northern Rockies Regional Municipality, which is quite unique in, in B C. And that's where they basically extended their, their boundary. They're about, I think, almost a sixth of the province is within their municipal boundary. And there, you know, they had a, you know, they've, they're not quite like Sayward, but they've got the Northern Rockies, which is sort of a tourist lifestyle draw as well. But they were finding that they were just like a getting, you know, put in a real tough financial position because they were, they were being expected to be, provide services not just for the residents, but for this industry in the region and a whole bunch of, of rural residents. And so what they ended up doing is they actually, up in the, in the Peace River region, they have an agreement that's called the Fair Share Agreement. And then that became the Peace River Agreement. And it was basically an agreement whereby the municipalities were able to secure a portion of the taxation revenue that would be going, you know, the province would be collecting from forestry companies and oil and gas companies up there. And they called it fair share because they were saying, we need to be collecting our fair share because we're being expected to provide services for an important provincial industry. You know, and this broader regional area, but we don't have the taxation powers to provide those services and we have an infrastructure deficit. And so that started in the Peace River region. And then the most recent municipality to negotiate a similar agreement was Fort Nelson or the Northern Rockies Regional Municipality. And that started with their O C P where they identified that as an issue. And they had some policies that were put into place that sort of committed or, or sort of signaled to the province that they wanted to enter discussions on a similar fair share type agreement. I believe some other communities in the Northwest had been pursuing that. I don't know if that's been successful or not, but, but that is something that some smaller municipalities have done, is use their O C P and then leverage that into discussions with the province about, you know, providing those type of services. And Hudson's Hope would be another example of a, of a small sort of resource community that kind of operates like a bedroom community to Fort St. John for a lot of quality of life. You know, reasons. And again, their O C P put in place a number of policies that they were then able to use to, you know, leverage funding and work with the, their neighboring regional areas, you know, to try and secure funding to provide services for not just that community, but the sort of the surrounding regional population as well.
So what type of things are we doing in our O C P to look at? For example, over the next twenty years, how are we going to drive that economic stability that we need in terms of not just being logging and not just being fishing? I mean, what are we looking at in terms of tourism development? What, what do we do other than fishing and logging to become more successful as a village? And to be able to maintain when the government grants get cut?
Is, is that a question for me or is that one for the rest of council?
Well, it's, it's for all of us because, I mean, if, if we consistently, if we stay on this path that we're on and that we've been on for the last X amount of years, how do we actually, how do we grow? How do we become not so dependent on, say, the fishing or the logging? I mean, we have to look at how we're going to grow in terms of how we're going to bring people here, how we're going to get that taxation. Because Counselor Craig is correct. I mean, our, our taxation right now is extremely low and we survive on government grants. So if there is nothing in place and we're not moving towards some type of independence from that, we are going to be in serious trouble.
Yeah, well, I think in, increasing your tax base is, is, is part of it, and that's residents. But, you know, another, you know, part of that is businesses and, you know, which could be commercial or tourism and, and as well industry. I think, I don't know the exact statistic, but I think in most municipalities, if you were to say, you know, break down the level of services, the residential tax base doesn't cover it. It's usually industry, it, commercial and industrial carry a, a, a bigger sort of shoulder, a bigger part of the load there. And so, you know, I think if you're talking about increasing tax base, one thing to think about is not just residential tax base, but some of these other, you know, commercial and industrial tax bases as well.
Well, you make more money from commercial tax than you do residential tax. I mean, they're, they're higher tax. So, but in order to attract business, we need to increase our residential as well. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I think when it comes to things like the grocery store, hotels, some of these amenities, you know, there, there's, you know, one of the big factors is, is just a population threshold kind of thing. Where you need that, that certain, it's a tipping point. You need that certain level of population for, you know, an entrepreneur to, to be able to come in and make a go, make a go of it. And, and, and that's probably, you know, one of the challenges and opportunities, you know, that Sayward is, is faced with is, you know, getting to that level, you know, where entrepreneurs can, can kind of come in and, and start to provide some of those services and amenities.
It's kind of the chicken and the egg almost.
Yeah.
Counselor Paulson? Counselor Paulson, you might be muted.
My comment is just about the difference between the people who want commercial growth, but they don't want industrial growth. And it's just, it seems to me that you, you can't expand your commercial growth unless you have industrial growth for people to come here for jobs and increase the population and increase the tax base. And then those commercial developments follow after that. And tourism is a, a great example for an industry that is basically untouched in Sayward. There's so many opportunities. And from the survey, people want Sayward to stay the same. Not many people want other people to come in and tour all around and trample in through our forests and things. And yet those people that don't want that came here in the first place. So it's kind of like, okay, now I'm here, everybody else can stay out. So I think we need to find a fine balance between leaving, keeping it the same or increasing it, increasing the industry and the, the commercial balance based on increasing the population. And all of these things are so interconnected that it just boggles my mind to think of how we can find some new industry that's not based in the village so that it doesn't upset the people with the noise and the dust and the, but it provides employment. And what, where can we go to, to, what can we do to increase that economy?
I think that if, I mean, for those people that you say, I mean, they come here, they say they don't want change. But however, you know, they don't want to see residential development. They don't want to see this. But however, every year their taxes are going to have to keep increasing because costs go up. But they want to keep it the same. We're, we're not going to survive if we keep everything the same as we are today. The village is not going to survive it. So this is why we're doing the O C P and to initiate and start that change in direction that everybody feels that we can actually still be a village in twenty years from now. Or a town.
And the, and the other, the other part of that is how do we attract people out to meetings and to volunteer groups and just general being a, a community participant? That's, it, it just seems to be such a struggle all over, all over B C. I was talking to the B C Volunteer Association last year when I was in Vancouver at, at a meeting. And it's province wide, the shortage of volunteers. And so how, how can we engage people to buy into this? We need to attract an economic base so that the taxes are spread out over more people. There's more homes, there's, and, and it's, and we can grow and develop without having some of this economic growth. So it's, it's, it seems to me that it's, it's a real challenge for us to, especially in a small place when you don't have a lot of people coming out and having their input. So I don't know, maybe we should offer a door prize or something for the, for the next public meeting that we have.
We, we have done that in the past and it's, you know, it can, you know, it can work as far as attracting people to come out. We, we actually have a little exercise using a, a, a web platform called Mural. And it's, it's a SWOT analysis, sort of talking about the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that Sayward is faced with. And we're, we're kind of starting to touch on it. So it's almost a good, I think, a good segue in. But I think if we did that exercise, it might be, that might be helpful to kind of carry the discussion on. But I, I also see that Tom has his hand up here as well, too.
Go ahead, Counselor Tinsley.
Thank you. I, I totally agree with Counselor Paulson's comments there. And also very excited about what you referred to as a platform. I mean, we all deal with all these different technological things and are good with them. But SWOT analysis, that would seem to be, from what I understand of what you just said, a, a very important exercise for this community. We, we have all these dynamics we're mentioning, which is the beauty of the natural resources, the limits of, of, of water supply and water control, the fire hazards, the connection to potentially the valley, valley area. Oh, something went wrong. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, my thing did something. All these dynamics and in what I'm going to call an old community, right? Built by an industrial company in a new age world where we have people who, yes, they want some jobs right here, but many of them are starting to work through the internet through, not only for COVID reasons, and there's lots of talk about the fact that many people will not be going back to the office regardless, because companies are saving money by having people at work, working at home. So there's an enormous dynamic here that we're dealing with. So I, I think that this platform, as I understand it from your short, short description, would be a perfect scenario for this community and our potential connection through the O C P to all those dynamics.
Great. So maybe Sydney, on that note, we can segue in and, and do a little test run of the, the platform and the SWOT analysis with council here?
Yeah. So I'll explain. So I'm going to share a link in the chat here. So if you just open, there's a little speech bubble at the top beside where show participants, it's open conversation. So there'll be a link. And you can click that and follow it to a website called Mural, and that's where we can start the exercise. Let me know if anybody has any issues at all. See a couple people popping up.
Well, that didn't work.
Did I pop up?
I see. No, not yet.
Okay. So I'm sorry. One more time, where do I find you?
So just at the top, the top bar, you see show participants is the two little people. And then beside that is the conversation, a little speech bubble. If you click that, that'll pop up and there should be a, a link in that conversation on the right hand side of your screen. And you just click that link and it should take you right there. I see a couple more people popping up now.
Oh, add people? No, oh, there I am.
I'm on there.
Awesome.
Accept all cookies?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think I've got there yet.
That's, that's okay. Well.
Yeah, no rush. We, so what you should see is a screen with a couple, there, like, with some cursors running around and there's some sticky notes and it says strengths, weaknesses.
Someone is a visiting raccoon.
That, that could be me.
Yeah, it doesn't, you don't have to have, you have your name, but you can put your name in if you want. At the bottom, I believe.
My name should be there.
Yeah, I think it is.
So I click on the two people.
Yeah, I'm a visiting cat.
You be the cat, I'll be the raccoon.
So not, not the two people, the, the speech bubble that's right beside it.
It says 11 beside it.
It should say show conversation with the little speech bubble that's beside the hand up.
I must not be on the right.
So on, on the Teams meeting, right? You know, where there's the screen with everyone's faces, right on top of that, there should be on the right hand side, what looks like two little people, then a sort of a speech talking bubble and then a smiley face with a hand up and then three dots.
You know what, I could show my screen.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Right. So you probably all see yourselves, it is this one here, the show conversation, this little speech bubble on the top of your own screen though.
And then when you click that, then
There's a link.
Yeah.
Alternatively, I can message you directly with it, I think. Or I can email you. Let me try that.
Is everybody else on but me?
I think I am, but I'm not sure. I didn't see a raccoon or anything for me. I have another low tech idea, which is where you show it on the screen and we tell you what we want to put in those things. And then you put them in and then we see where it goes.
That was the, that's the plan, Plan B. Why don't I just try, I'll quickly email you the link and that might be a little bit easier.
I think Sydney, we're going to have to go to your screen.
Sure.
And then we can talk to you and you can plug things in and it'll show up on the graphs and
No problem.
Like good stuff.
Sorry, Sydney.
No problem. We thought it's, you know, we, I even had some trouble figuring out how to, you know, set it up as well. So we thought it was a bit of a gamble, but it should still work, me sharing my screen. All right, I'll do that and then Jake, you can take it away.
Sorry. Think after a year I'd be better at that. Yeah, so we have this, it's called a SWAT exercise where we look at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats for an organization or in this case, you know, the community, Sayward. And you know, this exercise, along with all the other feedback we're getting, I think will be really valuable in terms of informing what we want to engage with the community, you know, in June, you know, if there's issues that sort of come up here. We could say, okay, we, we, let's make sure to talk about that and spend some time talking about that. And it can also inform how some of the policy is written so that we make sure that policy is written to address some of these opportunities, strengths, weaknesses and threats. You know, the current OCP was done in 2005. And you know, a lot has changed since then in terms of the legislation, but then also just sort of the market and the world around us. You know, there's, you know, like as Sydney highlighted in the background report, the, the real estate values increased significantly on the North Island. There's now a number of developers and landowners wanting to, to develop some, some fairly significant developments. And, and so making sure that we have policies to address things like infrastructure, economic development, environmental protection, and these issues and threats and opportunities is, is going to be really important. And so what we're hoping is, you know, just from this session, we can begin to identify some of those, those issues and, and then that can inform engagement, but then also we can make sure that the OCP touches on these issues as well. So the first one, the SWAT, what we do is we're just identify the, the strengths. So what we were hoping, and if, if folks are signed in, like I can see Counselor Craig there, you know, and Anne, you could just click on the sticky pad and write down what some of the strengths are, like, you know, in your opinion. It could be the small town feel, could be natural amenities, these sort of things. But, and there's no limit to how many you can, you can write down, but we just wanted to kind of do a bit of a brain dump about what are the strengths, the real strengths of Sayward? And if, if you're not able to, to do that, you could just maybe tell Sydney and she could, she could write it in.
I'm trying to get there, my screen's a little wonky. Sayward's got a unique, a very unique, as it's always been said, a unique environmental component to it with mountains and rivers and oceans abound. So you, you've got tremendous real estate value here to develop very high cost real estate housing. Because people pay a fortune for this kind of view. Did you hear that?
Yep. The views and real estate opportunities.
And, and you, and what you find is with higher cost real estate, you're going to bring in people with millions of dollars who buy these properties. And those types of people want amenities and they usually rich people get the amenities that they want, that's why the rich people. Not to be blunt like that, but you know, you follow the money and the money takes you higher. And, and so you want grocery stores and you want all the other little amenities. You need to attract the, the kind of wealth to a community that you need to force those into fruition. There we are, use the arrow keys, that works.
So a lot on the, just sort of the, the geography, the natural amenities is a, is a real strength. And then some of the citizens and the level of services right now.
Sorry, Counselor Tinsley, can you expand on good services for a small village? What services are you referring to, please?
I would say as a village of our size, the fact that we have police, ambulance, fire, recreation center, health clinic in such a small village, I believe is fairly unusual.
Thank you.
I, I know it was presented as a, as a challenge, maybe because it's changing, but I think historically, the affordability of Sayward has been sort of a strength. I don't know what, that, that's just my opinion though, so I don't want to put that down, but I don't know what, what thoughts are on that.
I think that's an excellent point. Affordability has been very important, but affordability is now almost another push because of the real estate move up the island. And the fact that this is a bedroom community, we can all see what's going on in terms of the real estate prices. And what used to be considered affordable is a new thing now. That doesn't mean it's good. Everyone wants to be able to have affordable housing, but it does drive the dynamics of moving in, right?
CAO? Oh, you muted, sorry.
Thank you, sorry, on that issue of affordability, I guess the other piece to that is affordable to whom? Because as you know, my house just went up for sale, 500,000. I don't know if that's going to be attracting a market from here or from outside. But it, it, to me, it's not affordable anymore. At 500,000 for a bungalow.
No.
So, so the other side of that is that you attract other people using the, the homes for vacation homes like we, we've seen in Port McNeil, which is a real problem because it's almost impossible to rent a place in Port McNeil because people kept their homes there since they were affordable and they could carry them as their second home, but it made it very difficult for locals.
I would also venture to say that if you look at a community like Wasps, and I don't mean to disparage Wasps in, in the slightest, but their, their housing is extremely affordable, but their community is, is it's, it's for all intents and purposes, a dead community. So affordability is not high on my, on my scale of, of future prosperity and success. And that's pretty much my two cents on, on that.
No, but if we are going to look at senior housing, that's where we're going to have to, affordability has to come into play. Counselor Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I tried to get my hand down. Where is it? So a very good point from Counselor Craig. And, and also CAO Anne, I mean, we all know that about 10 or 15 years ago, Long Beach, vast majority of the properties are now owned by foreign people all, all on the beach there. The nature of it is, is there's going to be a drive for the kind of environment that we have here. And to Mr. Mayor Baker's comment about affordable, it has to be a combination. Every person who can afford or not afford a certain type of housing does when they become a senior, generally want to stay in the same community. And I would say that the connection between us and the valley area is a common interest to bring that possibility together, combined with the industries and services that are available to whatever dynamic of person and the market creates in terms of the force that's, that's currently happening. That's my comments.
CAO, you have your hand up?
Sorry about, sorry about that. This is from my earlier comment, I, I don't have anything else to say, sorry.
Thank you.
Right. You know, the, the, I guess the comment on affordability, when I brought it up, I was thinking in a sort of like historically, that's been, you know, perhaps a strength, things are changing, you know, as, as affordability becomes an issue in Vancouver, more and more people are moving to places like the Comox Valley. And I, I can think of about a dozen friends that are now, you know, looking to move to, to Sayward and Port McNeil and places like that. And that's no doubt having an impact on, on the affordability in those places too, right? So it is a, you know, a dynamic, I guess, time right now. And totally appreciate Counselor Craig's comments too, where, you know, at one level affordability is a challenge, but on the other, if, if things are becoming affordability, that probably means you've got an attractive community that people are wanting to move to. And I think it just speaks to that need to find that balance kind of thing. It's not a, it's not a one or the other kind of thing.
Counselor Kerschner, you had a comment?
Yes, what Counselor Tinsley said a few minutes ago, I'm in complete agreement with him. And also with Counselor Craig was saying about Wasps, it's kind of we've got all these important services, most of them anyway. And they don't really have anything. So I think we're sitting pretty with the services we do have.
Thank you. CAO, you have your hand up? No, you don't? Oh, sorry, okay. Sorry, go ahead, Jake.
I, I was just going to say, maybe we could shift over to the, to the weaknesses quadrant here. And if we're thinking about, you know, some weaknesses, feel, feel free to start putting some in. You know, weaknesses could be things like infrastructure deficit, it could be challenging topography, issues with flooding, you know, remoteness, the, these are types of, types of things. You know, that you could think about when we're, we're talking about weaknesses.
Aging, aging infrastructure would be a weakness. Sydney, if you wanted to type that in for me, that would be wonderful.
I've got it in there for you.
So water control for the mountains, is that, are we referring to like a runoff, like runoff issues in Stormgrate, sure?
So it's Counselor Tinsley, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
I, I, I put that in because we do have an issue with some excessive water on extremely rainy times affecting at least one of our roads. And there is currently, I, I believe, an analysis being done around the causes of that and the, the potential cost to, to repair that. And I believe, we all believe that these issues could become more extreme as the environment changes. We seem to be moving to a time where we are either highly one way or the other, which is excessive rain or excessive heat would be my guesstimate. Anyway, that's my explanation.
Another weakness is, is lack of funds, lack, lack of revenue.
Yes.
I think Counselor Kerschner, is that your TV in the background? There we go. I do. Competition from Browns Bay Development is Counselor Craig.
What I mean by that is Browns Bay is doing a whole bunch of development in and around that area. And if they're going to develop more than 60 units of housing, which I do believe that they are, that's going to be the new bedroom community for Campbell River, which is going to tank this town. And it's not just Browns Bay, it's, there's, I believe, three developments coming up island closer to Campbell River. And it's, it's fair to assume that all those developments will be the future bedroom community to Campbell River, which leaves us out in the cold, be quite brutal about it. And so that has to be taken into account. And I also believe I put no transit because we don't actually have any transit to and from Campbell River, other than our community shuttle. And that is a big deterrent as well for relocating here as a bedroom community. Bedroom communities usually have either rail or, or bus lines for transit. And I'm guessing that Campbell River will extend their bus service to Browns Bay for, for transit, because that's what I would do, because it's in, it's in the Campbell River municipality. So you, you're going to have that competition coming in and taking a huge bite out of us.
CAO? C A O.
To Mayor Baker, um, just on that note about Browns Bay, uh, Tony and I spent uh several hours there on Thursday. Because we wanted to look at the RV park so that we had an idea of what kind of impact an RV park has on a landscape. Given the application that council has before it. Um, I I think she did mention the housing, but I think it's a strata that they're developing. They're already uh currently. There. I didn't think it was additional housing. They have a subdivision to create a strata to to somehow. Separate those properties that are there. There could be more, but it it I guess it is something to concern ourselves with, although we still have. A bit of a settlement here, which is different than a highway bedroom community, so. Uh, but I I will follow up on the Browns Bay thing because I I did think that was just. Current houses they had on the property that they were going to give a separate title to.
Thank you. Councillor Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, excellent points by councillor Craig. Um, there will be, as in any real estate expansion, uh, when things become expensive in in. A a city, the the gradual push out. Um, I do believe though that we have unique benefits. Being a little farther out and not too far, much less on the major mainland uh commute. Um, and with easy access to the water, very close to the water, much like Browns Bay, but not that much far further. So I believe that those features will add to our value. Um, but totally appreciating uh councillor Craig's uh comments. Um, density will increase, um, and also um expansion of land areas for a place like Campbell River where possible. My comments.
Another weakness that we do have is um, according to the studies there is is um. Majority of the people live in town are are fifty-five and over. So we have an aging population and part of growth is having younger families. Come to the community, and that's what will sustain us in decades to come. Councillor Craig?
Yeah, I have a a couple more, but um. In regards to uh commercial and industrial development, I'm not sure if this category is where you should put it. Having said that, if it is this category, Sayward is is quite a distance from the local airport, which is in Campbell River. And you've got heavy trucking expenses with the cost of fuel and whatnot. It makes it very cumbersome and financially difficult to have warehouses or industrial complexes in around here for a commercial base. To have things trucked up and down the island all the time, uh, which is the same. Argument that we just saw in a council meeting with Aqua Trans, because all the outfits are having this. This uh situation of it's just not cost feasible. Uh, so that is a tremendous weakness in that. We are a fair distance for trucking routes to to make a commercial industry viable here. Thank you.
Thank you, C A O. You have your hand up?
Sorry.
Okay. Sorry, Jake.
No, that's great. I uh just wanted to make sure I captured that. And then uh councillor Tinsley made a a comment that I I actually wanted to just make sure we captured over in the strength, which was uh the access to the water. So I did, I just yeah, I put that one in there.
Thank you.
As well, um.
Also, uh, one of the weaknesses is um. The, I don't know exactly what you call it, the water break at our marina. That is a weakness because larger vessels during uh rougher, a little rougher seas, which we get in the Johnstone Strait. On a fairly regular basis, sometimes have difficulty um actually getting into our marina.
Mm hmm. And is that because the 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 breakwater is just not sufficient or?
That's correct.
Yeah. Uh, okay.
I don't know what it's called. It's a blue floating thing that. It doesn't seem to do the trick during um poor weather.
It's a breakwater.
Breakwater. Yeah, that little breakwater is not doing the trick.
Okay, um. So that, I think that's, I I don't know if there's if there's nothing else then on this one for now, then maybe we could uh. Move down to some of the opportunities. And so when we're thinking of an opportunity, um, you know, this is something that uh could be building on a strength. Or um, you know, take taking advantage of uh, you know, uh, market conditions. So it could be something like um, you know, an opportunity to uh partner with uh. Sort of valley residents, it could be something like an opportunity, um. You know, to uh diversify, you know, the economy, it could be uh an opportunity to capture on tourism. Um, you know, and so there's sort of things that maybe haven't materialized, but they could. And it would be if they they represent a significant opportunity, um, you know, for the for the municipality.
Councillor Craig?
Yeah, um, one of your biggest opportunities came as a result of COVID, where it was deemed that. Employees don't need brick and mortar to work anymore. So what you what you have is because you have a a lack of 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 industrial supply here with the trucking and whatnot. You have a uh an abundance of technological supplies, so when you don't have to work at home, or I mean, when you don't have to work in a brick and mortar store. You'll find that the brick and mortar stores in the in the downtown towers in Vancouver. That that run an exuberantly high amount of rent each month. They don't have to, they don't have to have those anymore, so they can have remote satellite offices. So if you build up your technological capacity here, you can actually have a farmed out satellite office here. For your technology and technology doesn't need retail, it doesn't need shoppers, it doesn't need. Infrastructure really, other than technological infrastructure, it doesn't need uh anything but a post office and and an internet hookup with reliable internet. So you have a real opportunity to build on technology.
Agreed. And that's one of the things that the S R D is fighting hard for. With us and and all the way for the last mile project is to get our connectivity up to where it's the same as it is in Vancouver. So that's a very good point. Uh, councillor Kirchner.
Yeah, um, and one of the major opportunities here, or maybe a weakness, is uh lack of a store. And we could use somebody to come in and open up the store.
Well, that's an opportunity, right? Economic development.
There you go.
So I agree.
Yeah. One that we talk, oh, go ahead, sorry.
All right. No, but we also have the opportunity to partner up with um. With the Comox First Nations as well. So there's there's many partnerships that we could be looking at to get that economic development. Here into the community. Sorry, go ahead, Jake.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say one that that we talked about uh sort of uh. You know, in the discussion before we we started using this little platform was was just growth as an opportunity, like, you know, that um. You know, you're, maybe you weren't faced with this opportunity ten years ago or five years ago, but given the market conditions right now. Uh, there's an oper- there is an actual opportunity to grow if land is made available and infrastructure is in place.
Right. That's also part of the weakness.
Mm hmm.
Is the fact that right now we don't have that land available.
Yeah. Yeah, and 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 this is where the SWAT becomes quite interesting is because you start identifying these these threads and and you can start pulling. You know, priorities and and potentially polit- you know, developing policy out of this uh, this type of an exercise. Uh, promote boat tourism.
Mm hmm.
You know, and an interesting thing that's going on, uh, just to pull on that thread about Comox First Nation is um. You know, I don't know if, you know, anyone here has been to Bamfields lately. Um, but one of the, you know, the the First Nation there, uh, Huayt First Nation. Their modern treaty and uh, under the Mollnuth Treaty and and Comox is fairly advanced in their treaty process. But once Huayt signed that treaty, a whole bunch of um. Sort of re- new resources and opportunities flowed into that community. And and they've been quite active in acquiring land and sort of redeveloping uh, you know, land in Bamfield. And uh, and they they the Huayt, they talk about like creating the Huayt experience in Bamfield. So there's now sort of like a like an indigenous tourism economy kind of thing uh there. And that um, yeah, I just, you know, to build on your your comment about Comox, I think you're. You're you're quite right, there probably are significant opportunities there.
Anybody else for opportunities? C A O.
Uh, sorry about that. I can't operate my hand and my mute at the same time. Um, I thought the point that was made earlier about home-based businesses and working from home, maybe creating business hubs. That that seems to be a real opportunity because it's the young people that are moving away from the cities. And they're the ones that add so much to a community in terms of families, consumerism, you know, soccer teams, um, all that sort of thing. And uh, that that seems to be a a real opportunity here. Given the natural environment, so.
Great. Yeah, I I I would agree, I think historically, and and this is almost speaking from some personal experience. Uh, you know, Sayward has sort of had a bit of a reputation as, you know, a sleepy. You know, retirement community or a bedroom community, but 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 mainly um. Sort of like a retirement community, but I think more and more, a lot of young families um. Are are increasingly interested in places like um Sayward. And so there's an opportunity to kind of capture the, you know, some of that energy and make it uh, make it attractive for young families.
And there's definitely, you know, we have a an opportunity to try to get younger people involved. In um, in government here, in local government. And our C A O was mentioning before um, an idea of having a almost like a junior council. In play to try to um get that younger community out and learning the roles of council. And is that not correct, C A O?
Yes, it was a it was a discussion we had, and we we really tried hard to get people to uh submit surveys. Uh, I think a lot of our survey respondents were older uh based on the numbers that you reported, so. Now, I realize though that families are though, there's those years that just disappear when you have young children, they're just a big blur. You go to work, you get everyone fed, you get everyone to bed, and that's it. There's not much left in the day, so. Um, I realize it's harder for young people to get engaged, so maybe we need to find another way. Maybe we need to have a special day with childcare or something. Yeah.
You know, another thing maybe to think about too, and there's, you know, c- communities like Elkford and the in the Kootenays. Um, uh, you know, even Cumberland in the Comox Valley where they've. You know, they've gone uh and really started branding themselves in a certain aspect. So like Cumberland with sort of like the whole biking culture kind of thing. Um, you know, Elkford has a whole uh bear thing uh there, you know, and and so these are some. You know, some opportunities to kind of uh, you know, um, brand yourself to attract attract people as well too.
Great.
Okay, well, if there's uh, that's that's some great stuff there, maybe unless there's anything else, you know, we'll move over to some of the threats. Okay, so when we're we're talking about threats, this could be um. Again, you know, there's linkages between between all of these, but these could be things like uh. Climate change, it could be things like sea level rise, it could be uh, you know. A sort of a volatile sort of uh, you know, economy. Um, it could be um, uh, you know, things like an aging population, aging infrastructure. Um, you know, the I I'm just sort of throwing throwing some things out there to.
No, but you're right.
People thinking about it.
Aging uh, population and aging infrastructure is is huge. Uh, councillor Craig?
Yeah, actually, uh, the the main looming threat that we have right now is threat to our natural resource jobs. And that threat came from the uh federal government who who just impacted our fish farms here, which saw a grand total of. Eight people, nine people, sorry, uh, laid off from their employment as of two weeks ago, permanently laid off. Um, with eight weeks' notice who who worked. Uh, a couple of them have worked in this community, so any kind of any kind of government regulation or decision or industry decision that threatens. The natural resource of a community when a community only has two natural resources really uh is a major external threat.
And and the lack of um. I guess diversity is is a weakness as well. Councillor Paulson?
I I think she's on a call, Mayor Baker. I think I saw something pop up that that she was on a phone call.
Okay.
No, I'm not. I'm not on a phone call.
Oh, I don't, I just saw something pop up that says in a call.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry, but. I'm just trying to fill these things in with my bird.
She's she's the bird icon.
Yeah.
Are you the are you the hummingbird?
I don't know. I don't have a very long beak, so I think I might be.
Councillor Tinsley? You have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to recap uh an excellent point uh, as mentioned. Uh, some of these things interrelate, but uh brought up by councillor Craig around um financial constraints coming from provincial and federal governments in the future. That uh, that is an important thing to look at. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add to it?
I.
Or is it pretty much?
I I have a uh, maybe just a question um for the group and and it, you know, I mentioned climate change and sea level rise. Um, and and the reason I I mentioned it's not because I'm trying to, you know, uh, push push anything. But I know we had an interesting discussion with the Nature uh Trust that has the conservancy and the estuary. And they were talking about how they're expecting, you know, with climate change um and sea level rise, you know. Some pretty significant impacts on the on the estuary and it potentially moving, you know, back up the valley and, you know. Um, yeah, just just curious what uh council's thoughts are on on that. Because it uh, I hadn't really thought about it until until that stakeholder meeting when he mentioned it, and I thought it was pretty. It it kind of gave me pause.
Councillor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I totally agree with the comments there, so I'm trying to get my hand down at the same time. Um, I think we're all in the same boat. We we want to um. I think we're all in the same boat. We, we want to, um, live the lifestyle that we expect and we are a lot of us in denial of the reality of what is changing. Um, and that's been shown from many people who own waterfront properties. I know Campbell River is dealing with, with it. In terms of the reality of the, the flood zone right in Campbell River where a lot of, uh, major apartments are and seniors residences. So, uh, I think that's an excellent point. Thank you.
Counselor Craig?
Yeah, as part of the EPC, which is the emergency program, uh, me, uh, we did a study and a survey with Sean Koeman of the SRT. And, uh, we had a presentation regarding our flood zones and Sayward is actually extremely safe from a tsunami due to its geographic locations. Campbell River is not so much safe, um, because they have, they have some tsunami issues there. Because they built unfortunately for, or fortunately, I don't know how to say it, Campbell River built onto their, their, their risk lands. But Sayward is actually extremely safe from a tsunami. I guess further explanation is to, is to, that would be directed to Sean Koeman, but we did have experts on an emergency call to determine we are very, very safe from a tsunami due to our, due to our location.
Yeah, I think it's more of, um, eventually with the rising sea levels, not so much tsunami, but with the rising sea levels, how that could impact the community and the valley. CAO?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I, I think, uh, one of the concerns about sea level rise in the, in the estuary is the loss of habitat for a lot of the birds who nest on some of the low grounds. And then, you know, some of the fallout from that, when the water is just higher, we just lose that, those flatlands. So it's not so much of a risk to the community, but rather if we've identified the water in the estuary as a strength, then it, you know, it is exposed a little bit, uh, with sea level rise.
Jake?
Oh.
Your hat's still up, CAO? There you go.
Nope, putting it down.
Yeah, sorry. And, and this is maybe, uh, I don't know, like a strength and an opportunity and also a threat. And again, this is, uh, I, you know, reluctant to color it too much with my personal opinion, but I'm, I'm a big, uh, steelhead fisherman. And so, uh, the Salmon River and, uh, the Sayward Valley, you know, I spend, spend a lot of time, a lot of time there. And I think that's, uh, you know, um, just some of the what, from like a wildlife perspective. You know, there's some real, uh, there's some real incredible assets, whether it's elk or steelhead, like some real high value, uh, wildlife and, and, and fishing game. Uh, and that presents some real opportunities as far as like outdoor recreation and, you know, type folks and, um, you know, there's also probably a few threats there as well too, in terms of, um, you know, maintaining those populations and whatnot.
Anyone else? That's it. Jake?
No, that, well, I mean, unless, unless there's anything else, that's, uh, that's great. I think, you know, this exercise is intended to be a bit of a, a brain dump, but what we, you know, intend on doing is, uh, sort of looking at this and then making sure that when we're, uh, engaging the community that we're able to sort of focus in on some of these, these issues. And then it'll also allow us as we, you know, move forward with drafting policy. This is something we could turn back to and make sure that, uh, you know, these areas are, are, are covered and, and addressed.
So we get a copy of this particular screen?
Yep. So we'll have a, uh, save a copy of this screen and we can, uh, just, you know, distribute that to, to council as well. And it can be, um, you know, saved for, for the record and, and then incorporated into the plan itself too.
Thank you. Is, sorry, go ahead.
Nope, no, I was, uh, I'll let, I don't have anything.
I don't have anything. You're done.
Well, I was, I was just going to say we were, if, if we are done, we can go to the next slide. We were just talking about a few of the next, next steps. We can flip back to Sydney's, uh, PowerPoint slide. Yeah.
Please.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I guess at a high level, what we're planning on doing is, uh, conducting, uh, an engagement session in June, um, hopefully in person. And it's actually quite helpful now that the province has sort of outlined, uh, some of their public health orders and, and plan for getting, getting back. So, you know, knock on wood, at the end of June, we'll do uh, some, some in-person engagements, um, even if it's something outdoors, a booth kind of thing where we can, we can talk to people in person. And then in, in July, based on that feedback and everything we've received through the survey information today, uh, during the, the public engagement in June, we begin drafting, uh, an OCP. And then in August, uh, we'd have a sort of a second round of engagement, uh, where we touch base with council. Uh, and then, and then also take it back out to the community and the community can, can sort of react to the, hopefully to that draft plan that's being developed and, and, uh, sort of confirm that yes, we're on the right track with this policy or, uh, we might need to rework this section or, or bolster it. And then, uh, we're aiming in September to actually have a final, um, a final draft OCP. And, um, I think that's a really good target because that would, you know, um, put you in place for a bunch of funding cycles, uh, in the fall. And, uh, it would also, you know, I think the sooner you get an updated OCP, the better.
Is that everything that you have, Jake and Sydney?
Yeah, that, that was it, uh, for us tonight, unless there was any sort of general comments or questions that, that council had about the process or, or, uh, thoughts about what we've heard today or like to see moving forward?
Have any questions or comments? Before their departure or is everything been said? Pretty much. Okay, well, we want to thank you, all three of you for all your work. And, um, you know, the opportunity presented for us to be able to ask questions and get answers and get some very positive feedback. So I also want to thank all of council and staff for their input in tonight. I think it was, uh, very good. And, um, Michaela, you, you spoke way too often, so please, next time, just speak at all. But, um, I want to thank, um, I want to thank Urban Systems very much for all your work. And we look forward to the end of June to where we have a public, public interaction on the OCP.
Yes.
So thank you very much for coming, folks.
Thank you for taking the time. Uh, it's a pleasure and look forward to end of June.
Sounds good. Take care, guys.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Okay, so moving back, um, there is no resolution on that. The OCP council workshop agenda. This is all part of what we already discussed. Is that not correct? CAO? I'm sorry, uh, CAO, did we lose you? Okay. So, uh, the draft, the background report, community summary and analysis for household survey. I believe, um, unless rested council or someone on council disagrees, all that's been covered in what we've been doing the last hour. Agreed. Thank you. So number six, correspondence. There is none. Council report, there is none. Reports of committee, there is none. Mayor's report, there is none. Unfinished business, there is none. Staff reports, there is none. Bylaws, none. New business, none. And they moved the screen and I have to find where, where did we go? Public question period is also none. In camera is done. And adjournment, recommended resolution that on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, committee of the whole meeting be adjourned. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carried, meeting is adjourned. Again, thank you very much, everybody, for your input. I appreciate that very much. You have a good week and we'll see you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, guys.